All right, I want to thank everybody for coming to our work session. We're going to go ahead and call this to order. It is July 21st of 2020. This is our first work session back in the boardroom and we are broadcasting on YouTube as well as having the opportunity for folks to call in through Zoom and participate as well. We have most board members here. I've got member Holloman, member Hildy, member Marsette, Superintendent Bishop, myself, Elisa Vakalas, our Board Secretary Katie Grant, Board Member Bellamy. We have Board Member Donley on the line and Board Member Mitchell is joining us right now. So we do have everybody in attendance. Thank you. About a month ago, we set this work session up specifically to be a listening session for the community on our systemic practices and programs and policies and how it is affecting folks from all of their different lenses. And right now, we just want to start by listening. That is one of the first places to start any good conversation is to listen to what has gone on and what has happened. And so right now, we are very interested in hearing from our public. We do have 19 people signed up today and we have some that are telephonic and we do have some members here in person. Thank you. And so we're just going to work our way down the list. It is just like public testimony, everybody will have three minutes each. We will have a timer that goes off to help, and Katie is going to go off at 30 seconds. So you'll hear, especially for those listening online, hopefully you hear like a buzzer or an alarm tone that goes off that indicates you have 30 seconds to kind of wrap up your thoughts and finish up. And then we'll just kind of keep working our way down. And we look forward to hearing what everybody has to say. So thank you very much for coming and participating with us today. This is the start of a conversation. It is not the end. And Board Secretary, are we ready? Okay, our first person in the queue is Danielle Kemp. Danielle Kemp.
Hello, hello. Oh, hello? Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you. You may start when you are ready.
Phew, Lord, where was I? All right, well, it is good to hear everybody. So the two things I want to discuss, at least in this first meeting, is a little bit about the school resource officers and inequity in our school. First thing about the school resource officers, I'm not going to touch on too much because we have some folks who are going to testify about that in a little bit greater detail. But I just do want to say that I am definitely in favor of reducing the school resource officer presence in our schools. I believe that they kind of reinforce the school, the prison pipeline and that it has a disparate impact on communities of color, in particular, our children of color. And so, like I said, I will defer more comment on that for other folks coming down the line here. As far as inequity in school, there are several things that I would personally like to see and professionally as a teacher in ASD. You know, altered or omitted Black history representation in the Anchorage School District curriculum is kind of an issue with me. I teach music and I have to tell you, I was teaching one day in class and it was during Black History Month and we got onto a discussion, kind of got off track. And I kind of had a teaching moment talking about the history of slavery in our country. And there were some fifth graders in my class who didn't know that Black people were once enslaved in our country. And so that kind of troubled me. That, you know, that they had fifth graders would not know those sorts of things, starting in at least like a third grade, maybe even earlier than that, like in the second grade. Lack of literature buying about Black folks taught in ASD. K through five books, for example, Homemade Love, I Believe I Can, going up to like Hidden Figures and X for middle and high school students. Just a little stat for you here, Black folks are only 3% of Alaska's population and roughly 15% of the US population, yet our teachers, Black teachers, are only 1% of all ASD certified teachers. So, you know, that is a disparity that needs to be addressed immediately. I have some suggestions I would like to work with folks on how we can, you know, plus up our Black teacher population in the ASD. I also sent a list of over 200 questions to the board a couple of weeks back.
Danielle, I'm so sorry to interrupt. The buzzer did go off and we have hit our three minutes.
Man, okay.
For everybody testifying, if you don't get a chance to finish your thoughts, we certainly do welcome further public testimony as we go through the process as well as written testimony as well.
All right, all right. And just one more thing real quick, budget cuts. Definitely not equitable, okay, because they disproportionately affect our children of color. All right, especially through our primary grades K through five. Smaller class sizes improves such things as grade retention, school attendance, and test scores, just to name a few, okay?
Danielle, thank you so very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Leon Jaimez. Are you on the line with us, Leon?
I am, thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us today. We're going to start the timer at three minutes for you. You may begin when you are ready.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so my name is Leon Jaimez. I live in East Anchorage. And, you know, this is sort of, you know, an old and a new issue for me. And I submitted written testimony and, you know, I am really encouraged that the school district is willing to look at finding alternatives to law enforcement and the school resource officer program within the Anchorage School District. And when I was researching this issue, it just became very clear to me that there, you know, and I got, you know, a little bit emotional about it because it seemed that a lot of people had been really working very hard on this for many years now. And the data clearly shows that, you know, that students, Black and Indigenous students of color are being disproportionately affected by, you know, by significant percentages as far as ending up incarcerated through the school, the prison pipeline, you know, and that the school resource officer programs are contributing to that. And I think that, you know, as far as the funding, that that's going to be a challenge. And, but, you know, I just, I really want to encourage the school board to work on, you know, finding alternatives to law enforcement and getting counselors and alternative resources that are, you know, more capable of handling some of the issues that come up and more equitably addressing the students, students of color. And one of the arguments that I had run across was, you know, that some of the school resource officers really do go above and beyond in their capacity as that, and that, you know, that some of them are really well thought of and they do a lot for the students. And I don't want to discount that. But I also think that it just highlights a need and, you know, that there is a need there. And some of the school resource officers do step up and fill that need, you know, however they can. But I think that it's something that needs to be recognized and addressed more directly through appropriate resources and funding. And so I'll give back about, you know, 30 seconds, my time. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Megan McBride on the telephone. Megan, are you with us?
Hello?
Thank you. You've got three minutes. Yes, we can hear you. And you have three minutes. You can begin when you're ready.
My name is Megan McBride. I'm a high school teacher at East High as well as a former student and graduate of ASD. And I'd like to speak about the SRO program. I think it's easy to look at big cities with more predatory policing practices and feel comfortable that we're not doing that in Anchorage. And I think it's easy to see the pride we proclaim at having some of the most diverse schools in the country and trust that ASD is inclusive and equitable. But we are not exempt from the national reckoning our country is going through in response to horrific police violence and brutality against Black people. As a white teacher, I do not feel threatened by the police officers in my school. But I assume that many of my students and their family members do. This spring, several other teachers and I shared concerns about one particular student that none of us could reach after online classes started. We were worried about the student's well-being. I alerted my principal and he sent the police to do a wellness check. My heart sank. The police represent different things to different people. For many of my students, the police are a threat, not a resource. As a teacher, I should never be sending a threat like that to my students' doorstep. I've heard from many teachers that the school resource officers are trained to work with teams. They are the best APD officers to interact with youth. So much better to know your SRO rather than to have a random officer without that relationship. But what if we didn't always call the police? What if instead of funding law enforcement officers in schools, Anchorage funded drug and substance abuse counselors, suicide and domestic violence specialists, CIT homeless service group support staff, attendant support coordinators? What if we had a team of professionals able to support the safety and well-being of our students who didn't represent a threat to anyone's life? The stated goal of the SRO program is mentorship and relationship building. Could this role be better served by someone else? I think so. The mayor and police chiefs have shared a goal to create a more holistic public safety first responder team for Anchorage. Model Doc in Arizona program that will reduce APD's scope to law enforcement and provide specialized first responders that can better respond to other public safety needs, mental health, homelessness. School mentorship should be on this list, too. ASD has expressed a commitment to equity. This is no small goal, especially on the Native Denine and that land our district is on. Today, Black, Native, Latino, and Pacific Islander students in ASD are disproportionately more likely to be suspended and less likely to graduate. The reasons for this are not simple. But we must do a better job of supporting these students that we have been failing for too long. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Megan. Next up, I have Rihanna Gay. Are you on the line with us, Ms. Rihanna?
Yes, thank you. My name is Rihanna Gay. I teach at Creekside Park. And here's my testimony, one of two, because I will be sharing more later at the end of work session. Just because we have not heard negative complaints does not mean that they do not exist. Change is a must, so let us discuss the practices and policies that we need to adjust. I am here to offer solutions that include partnering with educators so that students can take credits in classes and coursework to learn about the justice system and other career paths that an SRO has to offer. Offer officers in the building, they can build intentional relationships with students. Another solution is train students in de-escalation strategies. And I would like to know how is the position funded? They are working for the students, so they must make sure the officers know our students' community and how to calmly intervene if crises arise. Make SRO's time in schools meaningful for our students and community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up on the telephone, I have Reagan Brooks. Reagan, are you with us? Reagan Brooks? All right, I'm going to keep going down the list. And if I miss anybody, then we'll try and circle back around at the end. Next up is Celeste Hodge with us today. All right, don't have Celeste quite yet. Next up, Toya Brown. Are you with us today?
Hi, yes, I'm here. So I'm the Anchorage, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, it's yours.
Okay. I need the Anchorage School District to target score improvement amongst BIPOC, Black, Indigenous, and people of color. ASD has long known that this is a significant issue in our community and it has gone without resolution for far too long. We need ASD's commitment to seeing that the Black community has accessibility to advanced educational opportunities like honors classes. I have raised a Black child in the Anchorage School District and I have found it has been a constant fight to force the school district's hand to give her access to advanced education opportunities, regardless of the fact that her testing scores have overwhelmingly demonstrated that she is capable to achieve success. In receiving those opportunities, she has been the only one or one of very few BIPOC students. ASD's system for school success report card and index numbers show disparity between white and BIPOC testing scores. The top achieving schools had no BIPOC representation at all. The media have spotlighted recent acts of violence towards Black Americans by the police and press from those events prompted ASD to issue a response statement on 6/16/20. Although this response is greatly appreciated, action is required on the part of ASD to ensure change. I am asking ASD take action to move towards increasing testing results amongst the BIPOC population, increase the number of Black and BIPOC students involved in accelerated or advanced educational opportunities like honors, AP, IB, and target reform in American history taught in class. If we do a better job at educating on the content taught in regards to Black history, like the impacts of slavery on the Black family, the barbarity of Reconstruction, the Black politicians in Congress after emancipation, the fact that Black Americans have successfully rebuilt their wealth in America over and over again, only to have it stolen or literally burnt down, as demonstrated in events with the Friedman's Bank or Black Wall Street, it will change the dynamics of race relations in this country. Our educational system pumps out uninformed children who often review social injustices issues as just the way it is and the way that it will always be. This is because they are denied truth and understanding and fundamental facts in American history as it relates to Black America. My daughter had to study from a history book this 2019-2020 school year, which said African-American slaves looked down on poor whites. Poor whites formed an underclass and their plight was worse than that of the African-American slaves. Although male slave owners had sexual relationships with female slaves, white women suffered too because children were reminders of their husbands' infidelity. These are quotes from Updated American History by Alan Brinkley, pages 301 through 305. The language in this textbook is deplorable. Not only is it inflammatory enough to discount the rape of slaves, carrying the child of your rapist, being locked in unending servitude, whipped, beaten, and murdered with no consequence, just like current events today, but the victims are portrayed to be the people who perpetuate the violation of human rights in every regard against slaves. We have to do better than this. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Next up, we have on the telephone, Polly Carr. Are you with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Wonderful. The floor is yours. You have three minutes.
Hi there. I am a mother of a nine-year-old daughter who is a student in the Anchorage School District. I would like to speak to the use of school resource officers in the ASD. I ask the school board to consider alternative solutions to support students in schools without the use of law enforcement personnel. In September 2018, a report called "We Came to Learn: A Call to Action for Police-Free Schools" by the Advancement Project and the Alliance for Educational Justice found that since the 1999 Columbine High School shooting, calls to increase school safety have resulted in an increasingly punitive system of school discipline aimed at students of color and that school policing has failed to make students of color safer. Today's students of color are more likely to face violence by police in schools than protection. Nationwide, Black students are three times more likely to attend school with police officers than mental health personnel. All ASD schools have police stationed in their buildings, but they do not all have social workers, support staff dedicated to homeless students, or counselors that aren't burdened by standardized testing and scheduling tasks. The effort to place police in schools has cost our nation millions of dollars, dollars that could be divested from the militarization of our schools and invested in mental health resources and strategies that improve the quality of life and educational experience for students of color. I grew up thinking of police as protection. My twin brother is a police officer in another state. And for my whole life, I have believed him, I viewed him as a source of security and safety. But I am white and for most of my life, I have also been blind to the experience of people of color with police. In the midst of such high-profile police violence against people of color across our country, we must be urgently conscious of the psychological and physical impact upon students of color by police presence. If students of color feel triggered, traumatized, or even threatened, that should be enough for us to pause and rethink, regardless of how kind and well-intentioned an officer may be. In Anchorage, we pride ourselves on having a diverse student body, but that is not enough. A culture of inclusion, equity, safety, and respect is what we need. And safety does not exist when Black and Brown young people are forced to interact with a system of policing that views them as a threat and not as students. We have to acknowledge that we live in a racist society and our communities are in pain. To become anti-racist requires active, intentional, and constant self-monitoring, unlearning, and course correction. Our schools should be a foundation for this unlearning and healing. That also means learning about true histories in our curriculum and removing curriculum that shares stories and views that hurt students of color. I urge you to end the use of school resource officers and develop alternative student and parent-informed strategies to help our schools feel safe for all. Please act with urgency and act with love. Thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you, Polly. Next up on the telephone, I have Jerry Lawton. Jerry, are you with us?
Hello?
Hi, thank you for joining us today. You have three minutes. The floor is yours.
Hello?
Hi, yes, you may continue.
I'm sorry. Good evening. My name is Jerry Lawton. I have a child in the Anchorage School District. Today, I'm calling to share testimony about the school resource officer program. First, I'd like to acknowledge my understanding of the specific partnership between Anchorage School District and the Anchorage Police Department is somewhat anecdotal and limited to the information available on the school district website. That said, tonight, my primary goal is to improve my understanding of how the program is evaluated and ask that the school district seek alternative solutions that create a climate where students are surrounded with resources and personnel that fit more naturally in an academic setting. More investments in professionals currently being replaced by law enforcement officers would provide a more effective student support. Counselors, nurses, social workers, and special education teachers would be a better way to use our resources to improve the quality of education in the school district. Law enforcement officers are not trained as well or equipped to deal with the root cause of most issues that arise inside a school. I think that having law enforcement officers in schools merely offers a Pollyannaish illusion of safety that ignores reality and the important perspective of many children that feel less safe because of their presence. Armed law enforcement officers create a different environment and send a mixed message to children. Matters of school safety and school discipline can become easily blurred and unless we provide a bright line for officers involved in these areas, this program may be doing more harm than good. On the surface, the program's goals listed on the website appear to be noble pursuits, but the absence of any meaningful data about how they are being tracked makes it seem less convincing. Ignoring these partnerships pitfalls and not explicitly outlining measures in place to avoid them raises the alarm for many students and parents. The Department of Education provided a Safe School Based Enforcement Through Collaboration, Understanding, and Respect Rubric several years ago as a framework for how to best implement these partnerships in community schools. I was not surprised to learn that the State of Alaska Compilation of School Discipline Laws and Regulations explicitly states that there are no laws that would enforce this level of accountability and actually encourage input from relevant stakeholders. If the school district wants a partnership that fulfills the program's mission, a secure place to start would be implementing the five action steps published in the rubric and providing that information on the website in a transparent manner. The district may have already taken these steps and I'm not able to find the information. Still, that kind of data would provide a better foundation for a serious conversation about the input, I mean, the impact effectiveness and necessity of the SRO program. Thank you very much for your time and the opportunity at this critical moment to speak on this issue.
Thank you for your testimony. Next up in person, I have Meredith Geteras. You have three minutes. The floor is yours.
I'm the Lead of the Schools on Trails Program for the Anchorage Park Foundation. Our mission is to build healthy parks and healthy people by improving access and connection to our community parks, trails, and green spaces. The Anchorage Park Foundation... Okay. Touching all the things. Okay. So I'm with the Park Foundation and I operate the Schools on Trails Program. The Anchorage Park Foundation Schools on Trails Program helps teachers take classes in all subject matters outside to nearby parks or green spaces. I recognize that ASD is facing many challenges in how to safely provide education during this global pandemic. If classes are to be held in person, we encourage the district to consider supporting outdoor learning and creating outdoor classroom spaces as part of their 2020-2021 school plan. Repurposing outdoor spaces is a cost-effective way to reduce the burden on indoor classrooms while providing fresh air, hands-on learning opportunities, and health benefits associated with increased access to nature, according to Green Schoolyards of America. We know from history that open-air classrooms were a successful strategy in past pandemics. Most recently, The New York Times wrote an article about how during the tuberculosis outbreak in New York City during 1907, many schools adapted to outdoor learning and none of the children got sick. The National Archives Foundation has images of lectures being held on bleachers while teachers lectured to students wrapped in jackets and hats. When considering adaptations for learning this next school year, I would encourage you to consider offering the option of holding classes outdoors by utilizing outdoor spaces, creating outdoor classrooms, and accessing local parks and trails. We know today that research shows the risk of transmission lessens greatly when outside. Being outside also allows for easier social distancing. Adapting to and normalizing outdoor learning can do more than just significantly reduce transmission of COVID. Study after study shows the social, emotional, and cognitive benefits to learning outdoors. Teachers report better focus, retention of information, and improved general well-being when teaching outdoors. One of my favorite quotes is from a local preschool teacher who says, "Outside, we all have space to be ourselves." Research also tells us that simply being outdoors can lower stress hormone levels, lessen the effects of anxiety, and dramatically reduce symptoms of PTSD. With one of the biggest concerns of lack of school being the health and well-being of students, learning outside can be a place that can not only keep students healthy, but help heal. We at the Park Foundation and the Schools on Trails Program are allies and want to help support the district and individual teachers who are interested in adapting, learning with any subject to be taken outdoors. I hope you seriously consider incorporating outdoor classrooms as part of a plan for a safe and successful academic year. We are ready and willing to help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up on the telephone, Mohammed Hanaz, number 11.
Hello, my name is Mohammed Hanaz. Thank you for allowing us to meet with you.
You have three minutes.
I'm a, thank you. I'm a local and I've been living here since I was four years old. I'm also a father of four and I attended many schools in the Anchorage School District and graduated by homeschooling myself. It was difficult. I had a tutor, but keeping myself on task as an adolescent was really hard. And I think we saw a glimpse of the difficulty that I went through at the end of last school year. And ASD's education online was not efficient. At one point, we saw the attendance rate decrease by approximately 80%. The asynchronous model will not work, in my opinion. And I believe many in the community will agree, when you're uploading work to an online portal When you're uploading work to an online portal and simply telling the kids to access the materials and complete them on their own, you're going to run into issues. Community college research centers have done numerous studies that show online learning to be inferior to learning in a classroom setting. There have been numerous doctors and researchers that have proven online doesn't work as well. Not only are you taking away the in-person classes, which is understandable given the circumstances, but now you're limiting the ability of children to attend regular class sessions online to once or maybe twice per week. We as a state already had an education issue. That's why the governor announced the Alaska REED Act so we can start an intervention. I believe the asynchronous model has stepped in the opposite directions. We parents understand the concern of everyone's health and safety, but ultimately, our children are the future, and we want to provide what's best for them. So for me, I want to understand how you plan to provide a better education than in the past when you're utilizing an inferior method of learning. Also, if you can provide classes in-person five days a week throughout the day, why can't you do so online? Teachers are even able to do this through, through their home. Why is there persistence in decreasing teacher-student interaction, even if it is through a Zoom session? How are you addressing the effects of all this on the children and the effects that it'll have socially and mentally? And my final question will be, how are you gonna mitigate privacy for the children when they're attending these online courses, especially in relation to the Children Online Privacy Protection Act? And that's, I'm finished.
Thank you very much. Next up on the telephone, speaker number 12, Peggy Finnegan. Are you with us, Peggy?
Hello, my name is Peggy Finnegan. I want to thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I appreciate all the comments that have gone before me. Just to reiterate, you know, one of the questions I have that I look at, you know, our world today, and we really do have a responsibility to change, change how things are. And one of the things that strikes me so much about the issues we have in our schools today, and why do we even have police officers in our schools in the first place, is the behaviors. The behaviors stem from trauma in childhood. We look at the statistics of how many children in this school district alone are homeless or in poverty, don't get the right meals. So what I would like to see happen is, is to not fund police officers in our schools, but fund actual mental health professionals, not guidance counselors, mental health professionals to assist people that, children to work through their problem. It looks like, you know, when I did look down the research around what's happening around the country with school police officers, that the research just does not hold up that there's improvements. And especially since we are really faced with looking at racism in this country. And racism is not something that individuals are not so racist. Racism is, is a systemic, it's in the system, in the, in the institution. And we can look at the results in our city alone that, you know, as I've said before, the people of color are affected at a much higher rate, and we need to change that. I would like to see our schools be a place where children are all welcome, where children feel safe, high schoolers feel safe, middle schoolers feel safe, teachers feel safe. And I don't think that in this day and age that police officers help people feel safe. So I would like you to very much consider finding funding for that. And, you know, one of my other points that I would like to make is I think one huge source of funding could be to remove computer education in the early grades, where it has been shown by numerous studies to not increase outcomes for students. The only thing that really increases outcomes for students that has been consistently shown is teacher-to-student ratio. So we can unfund all the unnecessarily computer, which is mostly just edutainment. It's pushing buttons. It's not really helping make them make cognitive leaps. And fund teachers, more teachers, and mental health professionals. And that's all I really want to make a point of. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Peggy. Community member number 13 is not with us today, so our next two will be in-person speakers. The first one will be Armando Soria.
Is it working? Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Armando Soria. I have three daughters that have attended or are attending the Anchorage School District. And first thing I want to say is, I'd just like to say that I'm in favor of in-school, of kids attending school in-person. I just came from Kincaid Park, and I saw about 50 kids out there in the lake and no social distancing or masking pretty much going on. And I've been to several ASD facilities over since the COVID outbreak, to the fields and all that, and have seen these kids interacting the whole time with no or little social distancing or mask. And I think, and, and I don't see a huge issue with it in the community based on the numbers, right? So we have a ton of kids going to the hospital and, you know, that are sick and, you know, being hospitalized. I think it can be done, and I think it can be done safely. I can't, I can't say how to be done. I'm not smart enough for that, but I think it can be done. But that's not why I'm here. I, I, first thing I'm, the, the main thing I'm here for is to support the SRO program, right? I want to first thank the Anchorage Police Department for all the good work they've done over the years. I thank AST for having the officers in their school. I grew up in Oakland, California, and in San Leandro, California, and I can tell you that personally, I'm glad there was SOLOs in our school, not just for safety, but they were friends. We got to know the guys. We got to know the gals in there, right? They were good people, right? They were well-trained, and sometimes they had to do things they probably didn't want to do. But a lot of them, I think, really enjoyed it. They had good, they had good relationships with the students, right? I felt safe, right? My family, they felt safe. They were glad they were there. And with that said, I, I did some research, and I wasn't here, I haven't been following this totally, but I found, and doing some research, asking for some files and then some internet researching, I have found no complaints so far against the SOLOs since their inception. And I don't know if that's changed, so if it has, please correct me. But I ask you to ask that question. If there's been no, there's been no issues, so what has changed, right? 2018, it was so successful, you guys expanded it from what I believe, correct? So what's changed in two years besides what is going on currently in our climate? You know, I, I just, do we think in this current climate with what's happening, the people getting canceled out, you know, Lord help you if kids say the wrong thing on social media when they return to school. Do we think the climate's gonna be better? Do we think when the officers have to be there for students, that they're gonna be there because of the way students will be treated now differently because of their views, if they're different than the majority? Okay? Has it changed? The, was that my time up already?
Twenty seconds.
Okay. So, uh, I've, I've, all I've heard is positive things from, about the officers in the school district, so I just want to say that. And then the other thing is, this is the kind of stuff they've demanded for years, demilitarization of the, of the police force, get the police out of their vehicles, community policing. This may be the only positive interaction that students have that with, or these kids have with police officers over their time. So this is the chance to do that and get them out of the vehicles, get them in-person with these people so they can actually get to meet officers and know that they're human, just like the students are. So I please ask you to extend the SRO program. I, I, one last thing. I do agree with some of these people here that say there needs to be other outlets for students, mental health, things like that. I do agree with that absolutely. But I think the SOLOs serve a good program, and they're just not there for enforcement. They're there for an outlet for students.
Armando, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Next up in person, I have Sam Spinella. Sam, is your mic on?
I'm Sam Spinella, East High School Principal. I can hear myself now. I, I'm here to speak in regard to the value of having SOLOs in our schools. I started with the Anchorage School District at East High School in 2002, 2003. I was the Student Services Assistant Principal that year. That year, we had 140 suspensions for fights. There were no SOLOs in the building. The next year, I continued as a Student Services Assistant Principal, and we had, that was the year we started with our SOLOs. In 2003, 2004, we had 40 suspensions for fights. The presence of the SOLOs in the building made a major difference. It was not only their presence, it was the positive manner in which they interacted with the students. Teachers invited them to visit classes and speak with the students during passing time, during lunch, before school, and after school. The SOLOs were out there interacting with the students. It was obvious that they were there to build relationships with the kids and to establish a positive interaction with them. They were very instrumental in breaking up the gang involvement in the schools. That previous year, there was evident gang activity in the school. During lunch and after school, it was evident, it was observable to see the factions forming against each other. East is a safer place because of the involvement of our SOLOs. In the past seven years since I've been back at East as the high school principal, there have been incidents that if the SOLOs were not present, a major disaster could have taken place. These incidents would have resulted in calling for APD officers for assistance. If we would have had to wait even a brief time for officers to arrive, the results would have been devastating. There have been times the SOLOs have had to use some force to restrain a student from hurting him herself and sometimes hurting another student or a staff member. But I have observed this to be done with extreme caution and only absolutely when necessary. The SOLOs have become adept at de-escalating a potential volatile situation. With their continued interaction with students and parents, the presence of the SOLOs continued to contribute a positive environment at East High. SOLOs continue to interact with students before school, during school, during lunch, after school, and between classes. Teachers continue to invite the SOLOs to visit classes. Parents call to speak with the SOLOs to seek their advice in given situations. Students seek out the SOLOs in regard to legal matters. The SOLOs are a great benefit to our schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up, I have speaker number 16 on the telephone, Shelley Morgan. Shelley, are you with us?
I am. Hi, can you hear me?
You sure can. Three minutes, you have the floor.
Great. Thank you. My name is Shelley Morgan. I'm a parent PTO president, and I work with students across Alaska. We live in one of the most diverse communities in the U.S., yet that diversity is represented in some, not all, of Anchorage schools. The most diverse schools in our district are located in the communities plagued with the highest rates of poverty, and with poverty, we frequently find trauma. Poverty is not a result of the people, but the systems in place that were built to create and maintain inequities so that some people would prosper at the expense of others. Inequities have been built into every system in this country, yet many struggle to bridge the connections between history and the way communities were designed through redlining and banking practices designed to limit certain groups of people from having access to wealth, mortgages, and fair loans. The fact that our lowest-income families attend schools with the least amount of funding, resources, and programs is the result of a system designed to purposely segregate neighborhoods under Roosevelt's Housing Authority. We must teach our students the true history so that by understanding the connections between history and today, students can develop social, emotional skills required to bring about the systemic changes that will restore equity to our communities. We must train our educators to recognize trauma and ensure our schools have the skills and resources to help students develop their own agency by providing more interventions and supports in the schools with greater need. We must ensure families of English-language learners have the ability to understand materials shared with families. Not only do we need to ensure equitable access to resources and supports, we also need to teach curriculum that actively supports diversity and inclusion, the historical roots of racism, how to identify implicit bias and social justice principles, so that we are educating our students to have the tools to end deep-rooted cycles of inequity. We teach, we need to teach and celebrate diversity and inclusion, from learning about different cultures through art, music, food, holidays for our youngest, to teaching about the struggles, triumphs, and social justice, and tackling the complex issues as students get older and develop critical thinking skills. Secondary students should be reading How to Be an Anti-Racist. They should be able to fully understand redlining, able to fully understand the not-so-distant history of boarding schools, and the development of the National Medical Association, why it was formed, and how it still plays a critical role in society with medical inequities. By providing age-appropriate resources to teach anti-racism, social justice, and cultural diversity appreciation, combined with ensuring our teachers have trauma-informed skills and equitable access to critical resource supports to help students process trauma, develop agency, learn and grow, we can truly deliver equitable education to our students. We need to shift funding towards trauma, SEL, and mental health support rather than funding school resource officers. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next up, speaker number 17, Sharidi Rapati. Hi, is it Charity? Are you with us?
Yes, I am.
All right, you have three minutes. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Welcome. Hello, everyone. My name is Sharidi Rapati. I am a rising sophomore at Columbia University and recently graduated from service high school in 2019. So I just want to talk about a few things, but also talk about the things that were said before me. When we talk about the elimination of the Anchorage School Resource Officers, and people are saying, quote-unquote, "I feel safe," ask yourself, who feels safe? More times than not, Black and Alaska-native students are targeted by these SOLOs. Black students are suspended at a rate nearly 30 times than that of white peers, and Alaska-native students are suspended twice as often as white students. And I'm, I'm, like, I'm calling on the school board to, like, adopt a plan for the district to eliminate the SOLOs, and fund resources like mental health, to fund resources for native students, to run resources for Black students. And some of my experiences, I'm so frustrated that the issues that I face to get, you know, to the college that I am right now are issues that my brother may continue to face when he heads to high school, and that's something that I don't want to see. Let's talk about how when we learn curriculum in our education, we learn that Malcolm X was violent, but we learn that Christopher Columbus discovered America, even though he raised Afro-indigenous girls and colonized and stole Native American land. Let's talk about how I was not exposed to the writing and work of Audre Lorde, of Malcolm X, of Cendillia Crenshaw until I got to Columbia University and was told by my white teachers that there weren't any Black indigenous or brown scholars right now. And so it's the fact that I do not want my younger siblings to have to go through what I did to get where I am. Let's talk about how when we enter higher education classes or when we enter classes about pursue college, there's not a lot of Black indigenous, you know, C representation. And that when we learn about curriculum, when we learn about slavery and genocide, that's all we learn. There's more to our history than slavery and genocide. And as someone who is Yupik and Samoan, I want my siblings to have a better experience in the education they learn. Now, in terms of the school resource officers, they need to be eliminated. Like, when people say somehow they felt safe, we, again, you have to ask yourself, which group felt safe? ASD prides itself on diversity. Dean Bishop claims to stand for students of color, yet when it comes to the classroom, students of color are exposed to some of the most violent rhetoric, having to defend Andrew Jackson in a activity, or having non-Black teachers and your white peers say the N-word when reading a play. Things need to change, and these are things that I don't want my younger brother to have to face, who is in fifth grade when he enters high school.
Charity, thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Next up on the list is speaker number 18 on the telephone, Chanel Afkan.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you, Sheri, for your comment. It was very powerful to hear. My name is Chanel Afkan. My indigenous name is Govangsa. I'm Yupik, and I'm calling in from the lands of the Dinai. Students and youths go to school to learn and be nurtured, yet the ACLU School Discipline Report, called COPS and No Counselors, reported that 39% of students at schools in Alaska during the 2015-16 school year reported the presence of police but no psychologist, nurse, social worker, or counselor at their school. I think this is a direct reflection of the criminalization of nonviolent misbehavior. I think this is a direct reflection of the criminalization of nonviolent misbehavior for especially Black Indigenous, students of color, regular populations who are likely underserved due to many systems of racism and inequity. And these are students without access to the same resources their white peers have. So I'm asking today the school board to remove law enforcement officers from classrooms in schools, redirect that funding to bring in mental health professionals who can help meet that disparity of trauma care, instead of widening it to create more trauma within classrooms, within schools, within our minds. And I thank you so much for your consideration, and that's all for me.
Thank you very much, Chanel. Next up, in person, I have Gardiner Cobb. Thank you for joining us. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Gardiner Cobb. In a previous life, I worked with the Anchorage Police Department for twenty-three years. I was here at Ground Zero. When we put the SRO program together, I worked closely with the Superintendent Como at that time, and got approval from the APD Command Staff, approval from ladies and gentlemen sitting in your seat to go with this program. After my career at APD, I worked two years here as the Director of Security and Emergency Preparedness, and then I worked as a consultant and did a district-wide site survey and review of policies and procedures after Sandy Hook, which formed the basis for an eight-point-six million grant request and a six-million-dollar grant award. Now, I've sat here, and I've listened to a lot of the comments, and I acknowledge, as far as the mentoring and things like that, there's room that maybe we could do better as an SRO program. I haven't been with the Anchorage Police Department now for ten years, but I think there's probably room where there could be some work there. However, during my time there, and what I'm aware of the officers now, we're pretty selective in the group of offices we selected. One of our best is sitting right there, Dwayne Jones. He and Mark Wells, we're the ottoman at Diamond High School with Principal Guyette and forming a team and providing good police service. I would just say, from the beginning, the police are in the schools primarily, not to be mentors, though we encourage that, they're there for school safety and better police service. It was the rash of police active attackers in the schools. Bethel High School, Mountain View Elementary, Columbine, Jones, and the Superintendent ASD in the Police Department were looking for ways to address and mitigate this horrible problem. And one of the things that came our way was the COPS grant program that allowed us to put officers in the school. Now, I don't have much time. I submitted a four-page written testimony that I would hope you would review, but I would just say a couple things here. Attacks at elementary schools are privately carried out by mentally ill adults. That's outside the purview of anything the Anchorage School District and primarily the Anchorage Police Department can do. That's a mental health issue that our community at large needs to face. However, what we can do, and I think the district has done a very good job, is harden our facilities, limit ingress and access. I'm running out of time here. Just talk real quickly about an issue that we had with a gang-related shooting in Anchorage, and some of the suspects were at two of our high schools, and we had information came in, I think it came from this officer right here, that people from the outside were going to come up and avenge that killing. We ended up moving several officers for several days into a school to prevent that, and unfortunately, I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. I'd like to circle back around to a couple of the callers that we weren't able to connect with earlier. Number five, Reagan Brooks, were you able to join us today? All right, still not hearing from Reagan. Caller number six, Celeste Hodge, are you able to connect with us today?
I am.
Wonderful. You've got three minutes, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Celeste Hodge Rowden, and I am speaking on behalf of the Alaska Black Caucus as its president and CEO. The Alaska Black Caucus is a nonpartisan local organization that fights for the rights of Black people in the areas of health, education, justice, and economics. I have three items to bring to your attention. The first, former state senator and Anchorage School District Board Member Betty Davis, crossed over to the other side in October 2018. Summits were held in her honor on February 16, 2019, and began on February 29, 2020. Betty first arrived in Alaska in 1972, a short thirteen years after Alaska became the forty-ninth state to join the Union. Her volunteer service to a host of organizations and elective offices worthy of her being called an Alaskan pioneer. As reference, two annual summits have been held in her honor. During the inaugural summit, it was suggested a public place be named after her. At the conclusion of the summit on February 16, 2019, nearly a year and a half ago, during the closing plenary session, there was universal support for recommending to the ASD that a school or administrative facility be named in her honor. By the time the second summit was held six months ago, recommendations had been narrowed to three schools, namely Airport Heights Elementary School, East High, and Fairview Elementary School. Summit participants were asked to cast advisory votes as to which of the schools they preferred to be named in her honor. The percentage of the breakout votes cast were East High School, fifty-nine percent, Airport Heights, twenty-eight percent, and Fairview, thirteen percent. The results of the advisory vote was transmitted to the Anchorage School District to the attention of the superintendent in a letter four months ago in early March. Now, we are in the month of July, and the community is still waiting on a response. These last few months have nearly drained my organization as we continue to fight the good fight against racism. We know that racism exists, and it didn't just start with the death of George Floyd. Racism has deep roots, and unfortunately, it's everywhere, even in education. Just look at your own statistics, not mine, you know, where it shows that four percent of white students were suspended in 2019 to 2020 school year compared to twelve percent of Black students. That's just one statistic, but it's similar throughout your statistics. Why is it when you look at your own statistics, the numbers paint a story of systemic racism? But in order to fight racism, we must move past denial. We must first recognize we have a problem. Again, I ask you to look at your own statistics.
Thank you so very much. But we do welcome written testimony, because we are out of time, but we would love to hear the rest of you have, what you had to say, if you would be willing to submit it in writing. We already, because we have the list. Yeah, so we've got observers, it's, yeah. And so, because we kept it, so we had people that were willing to, able to come in, so, yeah, yeah. And so, all right, so unless I have Reagan Brooks on the line, who is the one we were trying to connect with, but I don't hear her. And so we have worked all the way through the list of public speakers that signed up to testify, which we very much appreciate. As one of the speakers mentioned, if you look on Board Docs under Public Testimony, there is an item that has attachments to it for all of the written testimony that we received, and, you know, certainly encourage, you know, the community as well as board members to make sure we have gone through all of them and read them, and we thank them very much for submitting that. At this time, what I want to do is open the floor up for board comments, you know, to be made, just, you know, recognizing that this is the beginning of a conversation. This is going to be something that we will continue to work on and to continue to learn and dig and, you know, work to find solutions. And so this is not a one-time topic kind of work session. And so, do any board members have any comments that they would like to make this afternoon?
I would.
Member Bellamy?
I actually would like to thank everyone that testified today, but I'd also like to request, I guess I need at some point more information, and I'm glad that we at least had, it sounds like we had one, maybe two student voices today, because I think that's the voice that's missing. As a former principal, assistant principal, principal, central office administrator, I was around when the school resource program began. At that time, we kind of had a choice as to whether they, we, you know, whether or not we included them. We processed discipline according to our policies. If there was a criminal aspect to it, that would have been the only reason why we would have engaged our students with the police. Things have changed from the way they used to be, and I agree with Mr. Cobb, he has been around a long time, probably longer than me, but I, and I remember when the program started. I remember the response to Columbine, I remember, I remember, I remember. That was a different time, a different day, and I think what we have to do is shift our view from the view of the adults to trying to understand the feelings of our kids. I find it hard to believe, in this day and age, I don't know a single Black family in this town whose family, including my own, have not been adversely impacted by APD. And that's not always a bad thing, but at the same time, it's different. The view that our kids bring to our schools is not a majority view, it's not an adult view. It is a view of having, have had the talk, you stay away from the police, our kids are a captive audience. I don't have the answer. I know kids are a captive audience. They do what we say, when we say, how we say. We, and I want to hear their voices. I respect everybody who has testified. I respect every, the work that our assistant principals and principals do, but now is the time to look in the mirror, look at what we've been doing for decades, and decide, based on the view and input from our kids, whether or not it's the right thing to do. I, I, we have to do that. We can't just go status quo. The intent of what we do is totally different than the impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Bellamy. I want to take a moment, just real quick, and make some space for Board Member Donley, who is on the phone. Dave, did you want to chime in with any board comments at this time?
I just managed to unmute it. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
I have, I have no comments at this time.
Okay, thank you so much. I saw Board Member Holloman's hand, and then next up, Board Member Marseth. Thank you.
I do think it's important that we find a way to hear from the people that won't come testify. I mean, this, this is the great unknown about the SRO program is how it impacts students that don't speak up about it, don't react to it, and, and it's a difficult thing to get their reactions. I, I think it's going to take some work, and just, obviously, it's not something we can do by just holding a meeting and inviting people to come speak, that, that won't get it. We're going to have to find the right people to find students and sit down and talk to them, find parents to sit down and talk to them, and bring those reactions back as well. And then the, the difficult part, if there is adverse impact, is balancing that against the positives. Because the positives are there and we can find those, we need to make sure we're aware of all those as well, and look at it, and I think it'll help guide the program, I think it'll help guide us as we make a decision about it.
Thank you. Board Member Marseth, did you have some comments?
Been so long since I've turned this on, I can't remember how. I too agree that I, however we do it, and I don't think it's going to be easy, but I do believe student voices are important in this decision, because ultimately, those are the individuals that we're talking about, you know? Are they experiencing trauma? What are they seeing through their eyes? And I think, I think the SRO program really has a lot of, does a lot of good, but I don't know how everyone feels about it. And so I think it's important that we do get that information. And one thing I do want to say, because there's been a lot of talk about funding, and SRO program is not funded by ASD. When we talk about using those funds for something else, we don't have funds to use for something else unless the municipality wants to do that. We have been talking about mental health professionals, and if many of you have followed our budget, the money's not there, and I think it's going to get even worse. So for all the things that we need for our students, I know the Education Legislative Education Committee is meeting on Thursday, I believe, that would be a good time to reach out and let them know, or send emails or whatever, that trauma is something that we face every day in our schools, and with COVID-19 and other things, it has escalated. And I think we're going to see a lot more behavioral, a lot more family crisis, and mental health professionals are very important in our schools. The other thing I want to say is I've been following suspension rates since, well, I guess my son was in ninth grade, and he's now twenty-two a couple of days ago. So I can tell, you can look at the statistics, but I can tell you, when you break it down by schools, which I have broken it down by schools just recently, there are improvements in our Black suspension rates, if you look at individual schools. Our rates are for Hawaiian Pacific girls have gone up. Disability has not gone anywhere, it's right where it was, which is very high. There's, there are improvements, I will say, and so we need to look to see what's happening in those schools and find a way, but everything we do costs money, and change is hard, and I've been fighting this for a long time, as I know others have, and what we have to do is just, we have to make it happen somehow. So thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Mitchell?
So I, I echo what everyone has said. I really, really appreciate all the testimony, and there are so many voices we haven't heard from. I don't remember if it was at a board meeting or with a couple of other board members when we were talking about, you know, I, I was raised viewing police officers largely as friends and most of my spirit, your support, and, and somebody who you can always turn to for help. That has largely been my experience, not always, and yet, if I see a police officer in my mirror or on the side of the road, my blood pressure goes up, and I get a little bit tense. Am I doing everything right? Am I, you know, did I, did I use my turn signal and I changed lanes? And my, you know, my life experience with police officers largely has been very, very positive. So I know many of the SROs, I've had long conversations with them, I've gone bike riding with them in the summer when they're on the trails, and they are absolutely wonderful people, they are, they get extra training to work with young people, they are committed, they build strong relationships with students, they do, there are many benefits of having them in the school buildings. And I echo what Board Member Marseth said, that the resources we really need, unfortunately, you know, our resources are limited, and they have, we are cutting things every year, so it's hard to provide all the support we need. But I do believe that much of the benefit that the SROs provide can probably be provided in a more, if, if we have social workers and mental health professionals in the buildings in similar roles who really have, you know, six to eight years of extensive training with students, in, you know, really understand their developmental stages in a deep way that, no matter how much training an SRO gets, they probably will never have that deep training, I think we'll see that benefit and more. I, I echo what many of our callers said, that, you know, our children act out because of trauma in their lives, they're not, it's not their natural state of being, so we need to support that, we need a restorative justice approach, we need to help nurture that child. We don't need a school-to-prison pipeline. And I'm not saying that that's the SRO's focus, but in, you know, statistically, that is what happens across the country. Schools that have safety resources officers, safety resource officers in them have more arrests, and it is disproportionately students of color. So I think it's critical that we get groups of students or do one-on-ones with students and ask them, if, if 5% of our students or 10% of our students feel unsafe and uncomfortable at the, at the best and traumatized at the worst by the presence of police officers in our schools, that, that's not okay. So thank you.
Thank you. I want to, not seeing any other, Board Member Hildy?
Thank you. I really appreciate the testimony from everyone today because I, I think it created a lot more questions for me, and then we start getting better answers, so that's really good. And I've only been on the board two years, and it's kind of a weird moment for me because we've also had discussions where everybody's like, more SROs, more SROs, more SROs, very intense community support for that, too. And that doesn't, that's not a conclusion. That's just something I've experienced. So I would say I have more questions. Some of the testimony I heard was compelling. I think we're doing a great job in our elementary schools that we've heard hardening because we don't keep SROs in our schools, but I love that our police are so proactive when working with the district, so I think that's going great. I would want more actual information on what happens. We heard suspension rates, but my understanding is SROs aren't involved in suspensions, they'd only be involved in criminals. So that's more like principal and what's happening in that school, and some of those restorative justice practice. And, you know, I'm a big fan of cooldown rooms. It's my life, right? Like, it's my daily life. So, so I guess I, I just, these questions and testimony have created more questions, and I would want more concrete information. So yes, student testimony is important. I'll also say that sometimes my kids don't want things that I think that keep them safe. Like, I don't want gangs in our high school. If that's a real thing that SROs are improving, that's really important to me, and I might be willing for them to not feel as comfortable. I don't, you know, I don't know that answer. I don't have enough information, but those are things I'm balancing. And I thought a lot of the testimony was really good. I, I really appreciate talking about the roles that we say SROs are filling. Well, some of those are mental health roles, and so that makes a lot of sense that we'd want the best trained people doing those. Which is just to say, thank you for this opportunity. I don't, I know more, but I have more questions. I think Member Bellamy says that a lot now. I, I, I do say that about other issues, like, now I have more questions. So, so I thank you because I think this could help us get some better results for children, and that's ultimately the goal.
Board Member Marsette?
So I always have this saying, I don't like to throw the baby out with the bathwater. That's an old Southern sign, I'm sure. But I do want to hear from the kids, but I do think that given, I mean, we're not a big city. We're not facing the same type of things as Detroit, Minneapolis, and that sort of thing. And I think that our SROs do meet a need in our school, but maybe there's, maybe we don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. Maybe we look at everything and see how we can make it better. How can we create a relationship so that our, our children can begin to trust police officers and have that, you know, it's about, it's about bridging those things. And maybe I'm totally wrong, but I always believe that it's always better to sit down and talk with individuals and try to come up with a plan than just to say, you know, whenever you come up with a solution, it's like you go to one extreme or the other. So I would hope that we would have those type of conversations with all those involved.
Thank you. And Board Member Bellamy, did you have your?
I think Andy had his.
Oh, Andy? Okay, so you're way out there. I apologize. Board Member Holloman?
I do have one other comment to make, and that is, police are going to be in our schools, and they're there whether we have SROs or not. They're, they're going to be called because things happen at school that require their presence. When, when a crime is committed, we have an obligation to do that. And, and so one of the things the SRO program does do is the officers that show up have a familiarity, they have an understanding of what the school can do. It's, it's different than an officer that isn't familiar with staff, isn't familiar with protocols, isn't necessarily aligned with our objectives. They're doing their job as, as police work. And so there absolutely is a benefit from that standpoint, that, that we're going to have officers there, and we have officers that are familiar, that, that share the, the goal of keeping kids out of jail. And I do think that's a goal of the officers here in Anchorage as opposed to some programs in other states. And much like our charter schools, our SRO program is not necessarily like what we see in other states and other locations. So it's not an either or. There will be officers in the school for various reasons. The question is, what, what kind of mindset do they arrive with? How well do they know the student body? How well can they interact with them? There absolutely is a gain from this program in all those areas.
Thank you. And I want to make some space for Dr. Bishop to make some comments as well.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'm not going to actually speak to an opinion. I just wanted to share that the basis of arrests are based on not only law, but also presumptive sanctions about, in, in our policies, we have that you will call law enforcement when a law is broken. And so if we go back to policy, a lot of these issues or if we have concerns, we should review the policy because our administrators and our teachers are following through with policy that's been set, and whether it's a threat, we've seen many of those this last year, a threat to harm others, dealing drugs, you know, bringing a weapon, those are all things that have occurred in our school with presumptive sanctions. And so it's just, it's a bigger issue than discipline. It's literally back to policy and what is required by law to do when a, a crime has occurred. So I just wanted to, to bring that piece of it in, too, that there, there's a, a law enforcement policy built into our policy. Thank you.
Thank you. And Board Member Bellamy?
Yes, thank you. And I, and I appreciate that, Dr. Bishop, because you're absolutely correct, and those policies are probably likely, most likely what our staff are following, at least we hope. However, we are at a time and space where we have the opportunity as a board, as a community, to really look at what we're doing. And, and not just what we're doing, but how we're doing it. I mean, that's the equity piece. That's what, that's, that's the piece that we have got to, that we got to grapple with because if we are being equitable, if we are giving kids what they need, the resources, the funding, when we get it, when we can get it, the, the supports that they need to be successful. If that is our goal, we need to not just be checking SROs, we need to be checking everything, which includes the policy that ties the SROs to the criminalities in our schools. So that's the systemic piece that we have got to get a hold of. You can't just look at this about, I mean, you can look, adults are happy with the SROs. That's perfectly clear. All I'm saying is, is the SRO, how do we, how do we process it, just like we process our discipline policies, just like we would process our school choice options for kids and families, and who is asking ourselves those questions? Who's missing? Who's here? Who's most impacted? Why? Do we need to do it that way? Why do we do it that way? So to me, this is much deeper than just a get rid of a program or not get rid of a program. This is a systemic response to are we doing the best we can for every single kid who walks through the door? And you cannot tell me, people, you can't tell me that our little brown and blackface kids don't have some feelings around the experience they may have brought to school. The school is not responsible for their dad getting arrested, or they're seeing violence in the community where people are, and family members are mistreated. All police officers aren't bad. This is what I tell my grandkids. You need help? You go to an adult. If it's a policeman, that, it's a policeman, because the, the importance is to get the help. But at the same time, this is a moment, this is a moment, and either we're going to grab it and be systemic about our practice, be systemic about putting, putting our, our money where our mouth is, or we just shut up and just, just let it, let, just stay with the status quo? And for my time on the board, I'm, I don't want to stay with the status quo. We can do better. So whether it's SROs, whether it's how we're spending our money, whether it is, who, who, what, what is the face of our gifted program? Who gets the opportunity to go here and go there? That's the tough part. And yes, we will, I believe, if we do it right, we're going to change some processes, some policies, and some procedures, and we're going to do it for the right reason. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to take just a quick point of privilege to go back up to the public testimony. We do have Reagan Brooks, a caller on the telephone with us. And Reagan, are you able to join us?
Thank you so much. I just got unmuted. Thank you.
Perfect. Three minutes, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Hello, members of the school board and Superintendent Bishop. Thank you all for your hard work supporting students and educators, and thank you for taking the time to listen today. My name is Reagan Brooks. I'm the mother of two children in the Anchorage School District, a member of the Alaska Black Caucus Allies for Change Group, a former public school science teacher, and a volunteer in the Anchorage School District since 2013. I'm testifying today to urge you to consider alternatives to the school resource officer program here in Anchorage. The young people in our schools, many of them still children, deserve support that effectively meets their needs, does not amplify harm, and does not involve the use of law enforcement personnel. Many of the current police in school programs in the United States were established in the immediate post-Columbine era, and at the time, stationing police in schools was seen as a solution to the ruptured sense of safety felt by many. However, in the years since Columbine, numerous studies have found that the presence of police in schools can actually decrease safety and opportunities to learn. In other words, research now tells us that police in schools, regardless of their good intentions, tend to amplify negative outcomes for students, particularly Black, Indigenous, and Latinx students. Police in school programs are not just neutral, they're harmful. I know that to you, the leaders of our school district, all care deeply about reducing harm to the young people in your charge. I know you care about making choices that are healthy and strategic and supportive. I know you're also aware of the harmful effects of racism, particularly on Black, Indigenous, and other young people of color, and I suspect you're aware of the abundance of public health and education, education research suggesting that other, more effective, evidence-based options for supporting young people do exist. The SRO program is not your only option. You've got other, better options to choose from. Please support the young people and the educators and staff in our schools by making the choice to work with the Assembly to find healthy, evidence-based alternatives to the SRO programs. Work with the Assembly to redirect the funds spent on the SRO program on programs that will invest in the success of young people, not criminalize them and amplify the school-to-prison pipeline. Please work with the Assembly to find creative ways to invest in evidence-based solutions that are known to help young people thrive. Say goodbye to police officers and hello to more counselors and to teachers or other support staff. And remember that investing in evidence-based approaches will protect individual students, their classmates, their teachers, and our whole community. It's an investment in safety. Moving away from the SRO program will be a big change. It may even be uncomfortable for some, but positive change does not grow in comfort zones. Please embrace a growth mindset and step out of your comfort zone to invest in long-term positive change. The time is now.
Thank you very much for joining us, Reagan, and for being patient while we got back to you. So I want to say thank you to the community for all of their participation in today's work session. I want to thank board members for everything. I want to thank the administration for coming as well, and thank you for the grace and the patience as we went through our first in-person board meeting, combining as much telephonic opportunity as we were able to. So I just want to say thank you to everybody. We do have an executive session, and so I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of negotiations.
I still move.
Do I have a second? All right. I have a first and a second. We are now in executive session.